The Council is at the Marseilles where they come to me this morning. And we're still on the way for four. I think that we're going to have to do this on time. It's going to be a very expensive. 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 Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. The Councilroom and a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. March 3rd, 2002. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And the public is always invited to join us and participate here in council chambers. We can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Today is Tuesday, March 5th, excuse me, 2002. And it is election day in the state of California. So for all the voters out there who haven't had a chance to go to your polling place, please do so before 8:00 p.m. tonight and cast your ballots. Let your votes be heard. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernsen Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Race, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sign Padilla, ten members present in the forum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with the item of today's agenda, this being Tuesday and the first meetings of the week for the City Council, would you have the salute to the flag in a moment of inspiration? Agendized, I'd like to recognize Ms. Han to introduce our special guest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very honored this morning to have two of my good friends here. The first one, Eleanor Montano, who is with the County of Los Angeles Commission on Human Relations, also with the County of Los Angeles on the Civil Brand Commission for Institutional Inspection. And I would like to have her lead us in the flag salute.
Please stand.
Please stand. Right hand over your heart and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And I would like to introduce my other very dear friend. Please remain standing. The Reverend Reginald Pope of Bethel Missionary Baptist Church to provide us with our moment of inspiration.
Thank you, Mr. President, to the council. Good morning. Let us pray. Gracious God, on this day when the citizens of our state, in our county and city, are exercising their rights to be heard on issues and address individuals that affect their standards of life, we thank you for such opportunities and responsibilities. We thank you also for this city council that has been chosen to serve this present time. We ask that you continue granting them wisdom and knowledge, insight, foresight, determination, directions, that they may indeed do justice and love mercy. Continue to keep them in your keeping care as they deliberate and discuss and debate. May they come to decisions that will be suitable for this occasion. Thank you for all of this. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Madam Clerk, for sort of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zion moves and Mr. Ray seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Holden moves and Mr. Labange seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several commissioners to confirm. Item number three is confirmation of David Rubin to the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles.
We can have Mr. Rubin come forward at this time. I believe a public hearing has been held in committee considering the nominee. Please have a seat. Members wishing to be heard, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back, Mr. Rubin. Nice to see you here. Welcome to your family as well. Colleagues, we had Mr. Rubin in the Housing Community Development Committee. I strongly recommend him for the Housing Authority. It's a very important time for the Housing Authority, dealing with a number of issues which Mr. Rubin was lucky enough to be able to watch us deliberate about, whether it's the housing police right now or looking at some of the trespassing ordinances and making sure that we have a housing authority that fits by the federal guidelines. I rise simply in support of this nomination and to let you know that that was the committee's unanimous recommendation as well and to hope that all of the colleagues will do the same in joining me today in his confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to join Mr. Garcetti in commending Mr. Rubin. I think it's really terrific that you're here today because here's what you represent to me. Just as so many of us on this council represent a new generation of leadership for this city, so many of us had not been part of sort of the standard way of doing business that had existed in this building for so many years, you too represent a new generation of leadership. I mean, you've achieved such impressive success in your particular niche of the financial industry. You've been such a leader in the educational institutions with which you're affiliated, the religious institutions, and in your neighborhood in Hancock Park. But you too are from outside the mold that typically has served on these city commissions. So I think the mayor deserves a tremendous amount of credit for selecting you, and you deserve a lot of credit for stepping up to the plate to perform this important public service. So I congratulate you. The city of Los Angeles is very fortunate to have your services for the next several years, and I look forward to working with you, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Han.
Thank you. I rise in support of your confirmation today, and I believe that the Housing Authority and our federal housing projects that are within Los Angeles are really one of sometimes the most neglected part of our city. And as the pastor prayed for us this morning that we should be seeking justice and loving mercy, I feel like there is no greater place right now than for all the residents who find themselves a resident of one of our city Housing Authority projects that need people who are really concerned about their quality of life, about their safety, about there are young people who are growing up in the projects, and I hope you will always remember that they have just as much right to have basic city services in all those areas provided to them as does every other member of the city of Los Angeles. And as you know, I'm very concerned about the public safety and very concerned about the Housing Authority's ability to maintain its police department, and I hope you will continue to look for money, make sure that money is spent wisely in the Housing Authority so that we can, at very least, protect the people who live in our projects. So I support you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Han and Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, it's great to have a constituent of the fourth district who stepped up to the plate and got to serve, and he'll have great impact on the Housing Authority and his ability to communicate. One of his greatest impact will come from his five beautiful children, because I think it's important when you have someone who's a commissioner or has that great family challenge as well. So I just wanted to rise and support you, thank you for your service to Los Angeles, to all the people. And as Councilmember Han spoke of, thinking about the people in the projects, think creatively to find a way to help maximize the day to improve the houses they're in now so that one day can improve their lives, we would want everyone to have, and I know you can do that, David. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Rubin, how are you doing?
Good morning.
Good, good morning. Are you familiar with the request to set aside $100 billion for a trust fund for affordable housing?
Yes, sir.
Do you know they're going to take some of the money from the program to the Housing Authority, as already said?
I have not become familiar with that.
Well, you're going to come over here, you're going to be a commissioner. You don't know that they're going to start reading your budget before you even get sworn in?
I have to get all the information first to understand the situation.
Well, the fact of the matter is that my position's always been, yes, trust fund, but not maybe necessarily hard cash, but the equivalent, you know, tax credit and so on. As long as you're spending $100 billion a year for affordable housing, I have, you know, fine, we can manage that. When you start taking money away from disabled curb cuts, police, matching funds for feds, losing money, then of course, somebody's not looking at it clearly. There's not a comprehensive approach to providing affordable housing, though we need it. And so you don't have the power, the influence, you can only get frustrated over there saying, hey, wait a minute, let's have some affordable housing. All right? And here's the way we can come up with it. And you come around here, and they're going to disagree with you because they're going to test the wind like a weather vane, see how many people out there screaming, yelling, and shouting at them. And then they'll say, oh, we're going to go with them. And then of course, you analyze this whole period of time, give up your time and effort, and you're going to be frustrated as I am. I've been here fourteen and a half years. And I'm saying to you right now, tax credit, we've got some plans for the federal government, for the state, to help us provide affordable housing for our constituents. Have been doing it over the years, and that can give us $100 million that we need. But if you start taking away from these very vital and necessary programs such as public safety, and you'll find each of them will be complaining about public safety after a while, when they get as many shootings in that district as I have in mind. So it's a frustrating job, but you know, you hang in there, do the best you can, and that's all you can do. You can't change the world overnight. Just make a little indentation. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll and the confirmation. Mr. Rubin, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Time to get to work.
Thank you.
Forthwith to this. Before proceeding with the next agenda, I don't chair recognize Mr. Weiss for an introduction.
Mr. President, I appreciate it. And colleagues, I would just like to introduce to you, this morning we have with us UCLA Professor Mary Brent and six students who are with her from the UCLA Department of Social Welfare. If you guys could stand for a moment, these are six master's students who are about to finish their studies and become social workers and participate in a hands-on, day-to-day manner in our community, making Los Angeles a better place, healing so many families and situations that desperately call out for new ideas, for new energy. And it's wonderful that you're all here, and I just wanted to make sure that my colleagues saw the next generation of leaders in the field of social welfare. Thank you very much for coming to City Council.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Items four and five are also confirmations of Thomas Kushman Hudnut and Lee Hill to the South Valley Area Planning Commission and to the Harbor Area Planning Commission, respectively.
If those nominees can come forward at this time. Colleagues, as they come forward, if I can have your attention for just a second, the woman who so graciously led us in our salute to the flag this morning, Ms. Eleanor Montano, is also a nominee for the Area Planning Commission, I believe, in the Harbor area. It's agendized for tomorrow's meeting. She's here today. She was advised inaccurately that she was supposed to be present today as opposed to tomorrow. Her confirmation is agendized for tomorrow. She will not be able to join us tomorrow, so if you do have any questions or wish to discuss any issues with her, she's made herself available for a little while this morning. You can have the conversations separately. Today, the only two nominees for us for action are Thomas Kushman Hudnut and Lee Hill. At this time, recognize Mr. Race.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I just want to thank Mr. Hudnut and Mr. Hill for volunteering, stepping up to the plate. I just want to share with you that, Mr. Hudnut, we have an individual who has been the headmaster of the Harvard-Westlake School in North Hollywood and is very tuned into the educational issues. It's the kind of perspective we need now in land use decisions, knowing that we have a big push to build our schools and our facilities. So I want to thank you for your good work, and that you should know that the committee did support his endorsement for this position.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. Hill has extensive experience working with the Port of Long Beach for twenty years, has worked with the Port of LA for two or three.
Yes.
And twenty-nine-year resident with the area. So these are insights and perspectives we need in dealing with this discipline of reviewing land use decisions. So I just want to thank you for your good work. If you have anything to share with us, we'd love to hear it. So the choice is yours.
Just thank you for the opportunity to be considered for the position. I truly feel honored to do this. Thank you, Council.
Thank you for your good work.
I echo Mr. Hill's statements and concur with Councilman Holden in saying that we may not change the world, but we hope to make a dent in it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Holden, you've been making dents. I just heard something out in the corner of my ear. I just heard something out in the corner of my ear. I want to stand and commend both of you. I know Mr. Hudnut, and as far as I'm concerned, the Area Planning Commission is getting its first Renaissance man. It's extraordinary that you will do public service for the City of Los Angeles in this capacity. You've had the opportunity over your career to do so many different things. I believe you started out in politics and in public service, running a congressional campaign, the state of Maryland.
Correct.
Should I go with Connie Morella?
Yes, you're absolutely right. 11th District.
And so you're familiar with the political process, and you're also familiar with, as Mr. Reyes said, the challenges we face in terms of educating our next generation in Los Angeles. You've had such a stellar career since you came to Los Angeles. You've been so instrumental in the education and success of so many folks, including some people who may even be on the City Council right now. It's just extraordinary, and I look forward to working with you on this commission, and I wish you every success, Mr. Hudnut.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, again, I want to thank both of you for agreeing to volunteer in this line of public service. And I particularly want to stand and offer my enthusiastic support and confirmation of Mr. Lee Hill for the Harbor Area Planning Commission. Again, you're the kind of person that is perfect for this new level of public service that was created in the new city charter, these Area Planning Commission. And clearly, with your previous experience as Executive Director of the Port of Long Beach, you clearly know the issues in the Harbor area. You clearly know the players in the Harbor area, and you clearly know the balance that needs to take place always between the quality of life issues that neighborhood people care about versus the bigger issues that large industrial businesses such as the sports also care about. So I'm counting on you to understand that balance, to create that balance, and to really do as fair and good a job as I know you will do. I'm thrilled that the mayor has picked both of you to fill this slot. I think you'll do a really good job.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Hahn. I'll never disappoint you. And our meeting, first meeting, is this afternoon at 4:30, and I've already gone to the site and visited a couple of the items on the agenda. So I'm very, very excited about taking the decision, and thank you for considering it.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Mr. Hill and Mr. Hudnut. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudnut was my principal, my headmaster, so it's nice to call you to my office here. And I just have one question for you. Was my record ever expunged? But seriously, I do have a couple of questions for you. I know that there's always action.
Neither expunged nor excelled.
Glad to hear that. The 13th District actually used to be, I think, used to cover Harvard-Westlake when it was just Harvard at the time. So there is that tradition, even though we don't have you now. I know that you are well represented here. One question I have for both of you about zoning in general, one of the things that we're trying to do, obviously, there's a lot of talk about affordable housing right now, and a lot of that is really focused on building apartment units that are affordable. But one of the areas that I think all of us share, and since we have such a low rate, second only to New York, is homeownership. And one of the impediments at times to building more units that are actually affordable for purchase and for homeownership is lot size. And whether you had any thoughts about whether or not we could, in the future, look at smaller lot sizes, the number of cities are doing, in order to build the sort of homes that would still be affordable for median income in this city, which is increasingly more and more out of reach? It is a controversial zoning suggestion, but one that I think is needed in order to unlock those doors of homeownership. Just wanted to hear your thoughts.
As you might expect, working in an underpaid professional segment of the population, which is education, I am exquisitely sensitive to the need of affordable housing, because we bring numbers of teachers from across the country into the city each year. And I look forward to the sensitivities being refined through my service, and I look forward to being educated by the staffs of the council members whose district I will serve. Thank you.
I am not fully aware of the need, but in the areas, San Pedro and Wilmington area, but certainly you can see the area does need increased housing, and as long as it's consistent with the ordinance, city ordinance, then it should be something pursued. Habitat for Humanities has been a partner of mine, and I've been involved in that, and I know the need for that kind of housing. And going in and getting people to actually participate in building their own home is an extremely good way to do that, too.
I think, sorry.
Very, very meanable to increase the homeownership, and a great way to go.
And I think it will require taking on at times some of the more controversial elements of this in order to expand homeownership. We simply don't have many options left anymore. Condominiums are another way of going forward, but we have an incredible initiative from Fannie Mae to put billions of dollars in this area for homeownership, but in the city itself there just aren't the places to build. So we will have to look at that creatively, and I do hope that you'll keep an open mind on that issue.
Well, thank you for beginning our education. Yes.
Thank you for beginning mine. And I'm glad we, I got my political start, I think, at Harvard. It's nice to see you back here as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Hudnut?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hill?
Yes, sir.
How are you?
Fine, thank you. Fine, thank you.
Good, good. Now, you know, I asked some questions the other day, I mean, the Housing Authority, you're an Area Planning Commissioner, and you're going to really have these neighborhood councils coming after you, converging on you, saying, don't put that affordable housing project in my district. I mean, one, two, or three houses that's worth $400,000, $500,000, you know, we can go with that. When you start talking about affordable housing, now, I've been here long enough to know that every community is not that receptive of affordable housing. I know in Studio City where they had this community redevelopment area set up, they're going to put in affordable housing, they virtually almost recalled the consulate. In fact, the consulate who preceded Mr. Weiss rescinded the requirement to have the redevelopment area which would ask, would provide for affordable housing. He said, no, because it's too expensive. So we all want to speak to my heart sometimes and do the right thing for the people who need affordable housing the most. But you have to make that hard, cold decision, sitting here saying you support it. When they converge on you, and, you know, you're probably going to stick to the gun and stick with affordable housing. And you're going to come here, and they're going to switch it on you. I tell you right now, I've got one month, one year, four months left. They're going to flip on you and not follow through with affordable housing and yield to the pressure of those organizations. That's what they're going to do. So don't become frustrated when that happens. As I said before, just do what you can do. If it turns out to be a little indentation, do that, and you'll make a difference. Margin over, you'll make that difference. Good luck, and God bless you for all the courage you're showing today.
Thank you.
And we'll have to show.
Thank you for your wisdom.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation of the two commission nominees before us. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Congratulations. You were both confirmed.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you for serving the city. Madam Clerk, forthwith on the confirmations, please. And for those of you watching at home, if this is live, you still have until 8:00 p.m. tonight to go vote. If you're watching the evening rebroadcast of today's council meeting, you probably have about 10 or 15 minutes to get to your polling place. So please turn off the television and go vote. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number one is an item noticed for public hearing. It's a public convenience or necessity in Council District Three, and Council must make the findings.
I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to be heard on item number one? Anybody wishing to be heard on item number one? Then, Madam Clerk, are we ready to take a vote on the findings?
I believe Mr. Zine is in support of this and is going to make the findings.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would just move that the application be granted on item number one. Is that satisfactory?
Okay. Motion from Mr. Zine.
Simple as can be.
Any other members wishing to be heard? Then seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Motion passes. Next item, please.
Item number two is also a public hearing item, and that is an ordinance regarding confirmation of assessments for the Santa Monica Transit Parkway Street lighting district.
Okay. Item number two before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on this item. Shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to be heard on item number two? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved, and that being an ordinance, we do have more than 12 votes on it. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items six through 12.
Items six through 12 now before us. Public hearing has been held in committee on these items. I do have a few cards on item number six, but it'll take a motion from the floor to reopen the public hearing. Members wishing to call any specials?
Can I call 11 special, please?
11 called special by Ms. Hahn. 10 called special by Mr. Lavagna. 12 called special by Mr. Garcetti. 6 called special by Ms. Zine. Any other specials? Members, we have items seven, eight, and nine still before us. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items seven, eight, and nine. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 13 through 26.
Items 13 through 26 now before us. Do not have cards from members of the public to be heard on these items. Are there any specials?
Item 18, please.
Item 18 called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Items 13 through 26. Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those items are approved. Forthwith on item 17, please. One step ahead of you. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. On the supplemental agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held, those are items 27 through 35.
Ms. Perry, did you wish to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make a motion to give another review of item 19 from March 1st. Need to reopen that matter for reconsideration.
Okay. Motion to reconsider. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Now, Ms. Perry, did you wish to consider that item today or to continue?
Yeah, we can do it.
Today? Okay, let's hold that on the desk.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, I believe we were on items 27 through 35.
Yes, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on these items. Are there any specials? Items 27 through 35. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 36 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk.
That would take you back to the items called special. Item number six is called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
I have a question for the city attorney regarding this item. Since it is now March 5th.
Oh, you're talking about the March 1st date?
Yes.
I don't think that's a problem. I've spoken to the attorney who drafted it this morning. She's actually on her way over. She informs me that it doesn't affect the ordinance.
Madam City Attorney, is she on the way over to answer questions?
If you'd like to hold it, she should be here in a few minutes.
Okay, let's do that. Let's hold it on the desk. Let's take the next item, please.
Item number 10 called special by Councilmember Lavagna.
Mr. Lavagna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, this is an opportunity for the city to better publicize its many, many, many hundreds of events. Many of our departments have events that are sometimes conflicted because they have two good things in the same day that our citizens can't get to, and this will afford the opportunity for our great City Clerk's Office and the staff there to help coordinate it. There's no financial impact. We also worked greatly with Channel 35 on this, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention because I know how hard some of you work and your staffs work to organize things in the community, only to find that a master calendar, and if it was followed, would probably have enhanced that event and allowed more people to come and participate, to learn about the good things of city government, to have the ability to input city government, and learn about what all the people are doing in this city to make this a great city of Los Angeles. Just to call for your support. Thank you for all your and your staff's cooperation on this effort and the great work of the City Clerk's Office. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavagna. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. I have a question for you, Mr. Lavagna. You, more than any other council member, knows the special events that take place in all corners of this city. Do you have the top three favorites?
I like the marathon. I like the marathon, and I like the bike ride, and then I like the Hollywood Christmas Parade, which we've got to fight to help. But I also love anything in San Pedro and anything in the valley and anything that crosses the Sixth Street Bridge, because this is the greatest city that God ever created. Thank you.
All right, now let's have a great master calendar to go with that. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That item is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lavagna. Next item, please.
Item number 11 called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn. Item number 11.
Do we have any staff here on this item?
I believe that would be someone from General Services. If nobody is immediately available, let's call over to the department and hold this on the desk while somebody comes to answer questions.
Thank you.
Or the CIO. Is the CIO here? Mr. Fujioka, are you prepared to answer questions on item 11? No? Okay, let's hold this on the desk. Next item, please.
Item number 12 is called special by Councilmember Garcetti, and there are two reports on that file also.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have staff here on this? Colleagues, this was just a receive and file about city jobs program, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, and obviously is very much become a model for how we can do welfare to work in the public sector, providing folks that are on welfare to become, come in and have jobs here, working for the city, take some of our most needy out there in the community, and give them good-paying jobs and the skills to become part of the city family. I wanted to inquire right now as to the situation. I know with the budget freeze, we have some promises that were out there in terms of folks that would get jobs, but we have a freeze. Can you tell the council in terms of what are some of the federal guidelines that we have to adhere by, and what is the situation right now with these few dozen workers, or however many there are, that are, were promised a job and basically are still waiting for the city to do that?
Good morning, Council. Mark Johnston, Welfare to Work, Workforce Development Division, CDD. The city jobs program was set up with a series of MOUs between CDD and other city departments whereby they would be, the trainees would have their 100% of their, the costs associated with training them. associated with training them. At the end of the training period, they would transition into city employment, and we have had about seventy such trainees transition so far. Currently, we have approximately fifty-eight who have completed their training in the last two months, but are unable to transition to civil service status because of the freeze. And the federal guidelines specify that these training dollars must go towards training that ends up in employment. So it's a, there is a potential for a disallowed cost if we're to further pay for these people at this point.
Colleagues, I know that this is often a time when we have a lot of business get done, but I did want to point out to folks that we do have these people right now waiting for jobs. We may not be able to keep them any longer because of disallowed costs at the federal level, and I think that though we do have a freeze in place, these are promises that we made out there. Some of the folks even, as I understand it, left other jobs from the city to be trained.
That's correct.
So what we have, colleagues, is city employees who have left, who left in some cases certain jobs to go through a job training, welfare-to-work program, who right now, because of the hiring freeze, may be locked out of even having a job. I think this is action that we need to take soon. I know this has been referred to the Budget Finance Committee, and I understand the need financially to have the freeze in place, but I do hope that we'll be able to perhaps make sure that this moves along swiftly, and I appreciate the report and recommend receiving and filing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion then on item number twelve, have two committee reports, Mr. Garcetti?
Receive and file the EDE report.
And move the other?
Move the other.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Mr. Lavange. Okay, his question has been answered. For item number twelve, then. Mr. Garcetti, you wish to move the Personnel Committee report?
They're both receive and file.
There is an additional instruction on the EDE report.
Is that for the solar paneling?
That was for CDD.
Let's move the EDE then and receive and file the personnel.
Okay, motion is to receive and file twelve B and to adopt twelve A. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item, please.
Item number eighteen called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, council president, colleagues. Before you, essentially a focus on what we need to do with the condition of lead poisoning and the condition of our housing, I just want to share with you a few statistics so that we can get a grasp of the extent of this issue. Based on 1990 census data, eighty-four percent of the city's housing units were built before 1979, 32% of which were built before 1950. All the children residing in 84% of the city's housing units should be tested for lead poisoning irregardless of their race, color, economic income. We also have a situation where we have 285,976 children under the age of five, the most vulnerable to lead poisoning. And so what we're doing here, colleagues, is this resolution would have the city sponsor legislation in Sacramento to create a tax and other incentives to encourage lead-based poison, lead-based paint hazard reduction by owners of the city's privately-owned pre-1979 housing stocks. We seek waivers from the State Department of Health and Services Certification Department to city and county inspectors who complete the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's one-day training session on lead clearance testing procedures. What we're trying to do here is start a comprehensive approach in dealing with these health issues as they affect our young people in lead-based, poisoned environments in our housing stock. I think we need a comprehensive approach in how we're dealing with these issues, creating housing, putting money for housing in one sense, but also dealing with existing housing stocks in another. So this resolution is one phase of several phases that I'll be bringing forward to the council and dealing with this very, very critical situation. You might be aware that young kids, children, who get impacted by lead poisoning, or even eat chips of lead in your homes, and this is for the public as well, has a very negative effect on young kids when they're growing up. It impairs their ability to learn, it impairs their brain, and bottom line, it's very unhealthy. So with your support, we can pass this resolution and start on a different path in dealing with this very critical situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number eighteen. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item eighteen is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, the item that was reconsidered from Friday, and that's council file 012062.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. With respect to item nineteen, which was on our agenda for March the first, I wanted decided to be reconsidered, and I'd like to now make a motion to adopt the resolution that was previously made without setting the hearing date at this point.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Motion is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number six is on the desk.
Is our city attorney here? Can she come forward at this time? Ms. Zine, if I can ask you to press your button, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. We have representatives from the City Attorney's Office of Building and Safety who've briefed me, and a few have also briefed the council on the questions about the loophole and the questions about apartment buildings, and why you can't have one safety unit for an entire building versus a safety unit for each unit in the multiple buildings. If you could please address those questions.
Yes, Tom Stevens, Department of Building and Safety, this ordinance, as it's written, was put together to try to close some of the issues that the industry had and would help the department make a more effective ordinance, which is to get seismic gas shut-off valves out there. One of the issues that came up before is when escrow is opened, that's a contract as part of the sale of a property. And the issue was by making ordinance effective on a certain date, that didn't mean that the contractor was, the contract wasn't entered due before that date, and it made it difficult for the contract. The language before you indicates that this would make March first the effective date for escrow's opening on or after that time, and all escrows closing after that date would also require seismic gas shut-off. It gives them a date certain in which to apply their contract to, and it clears up the issue for the real estate company, and it makes it easier for the department in Building and Safety and Forces. One of the loopholes that we discussed with Councilman Zine is the fact that the ordinance is in place right now. It became effective December 29th of 2001, so we have a period of time between December 29th, 2001, and March 1st of 2002, and the question is, how would we apply the provisions of this ordinance? And it would be the department's intent that we would allow those people, those escrows to close within that period of time with the passage of this ordinance, to install those valves within one year after the date of close of escrow. For the period, the escrows that, if this ordinance is passed, which makes the effective date of this ordinance, the close of escrow or opening of escrow as of March 1st, we have a period of time between December 29th, which was effective date of the last ordinance, and March 1st. The department would allow those to have a year to comply. There's...
And then the issue of the multiple, the apartment buildings with 100 units, and you showed me a photograph where you have a safety device that controls the entire unit, entire complex, all 100 gas meters, versus the separate installation of each and every unit. Can you expound upon that?
Right, and I'm sorry, I don't have a bigger picture. This is on a short notice, the best I could do. What you have a typical on an apartment house or a, and this happens to be a commercial building with multiple gas meters, is you'll have one gas pipe coming out of the ground served by the utilities, and it'll go into a loop system that'll feed individual meters. And the ordinance, as we've amended it, would allow the single, because the gas company have recently got out of the business of installing gas valves, although the ordinance does allow us to install it in there with their permission, that means that the piping from the ground all the way to the, to each individual meter belongs to the gas company, and we cannot put a valve in that gas pipe. So that would require each individual meter to install a gas valve. And the ordinances that you have before you today addresses that somewhat, because it would allow an individual tenant who's doing remodel or individual sale of condominium to retrofit their unit, their gas piping, and comply with this ordinance. Obviously, per preference of us to be able to install it, a single gas valve to protect the whole building, again, this is a PUC issue that is not, we do not have jurisdiction over in the department.
So the question is, common sense to say you would protect the entire building to have the gas shut-off protecting all of the gas meters versus one, two, or three, and the rest of them not protected? And from what I was told, that's the ruling from the PUC, which defies common sense and logic if we're talking about installing these to protect the buildings and the people from explosion at the time of an earthquake. So the only way that can be changed is through the Public Utilities Commission and the state legislature?
Yes, Councilman Burnson brought that up in committee, and that was, that was his...
I understand Councilman Burnson is going to follow through with some legislation. Yeah, it would be safer for the community. I would also ask, Mr. President, that the representatives that asked to speak, we permit them to speak also?
Okay, that's a motion to reopen the public hearing?
For those that submitted cards, only those that have submitted cards to speak.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, there's a motion to reopen the public hearing and allow the members of the public who submitted cards to be heard on this item once again. Let's open the roll on reopening the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, so the public hearing has been reopened. We'll take a pause from the council discussion and debate and call forward at this time Mr. Trevor Grimm to be followed by Brian Hatkoff, Les Saffel, Fabian Padilla, no relation, James Litz, and Richard Otterstrom.
If I would ask the speakers if somehow they can consolidate if it's going to be the same thing, or they can consolidate in the effort of time?
Thank you. My name is Trevor Grimm, General Counsel, Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, also an owner of rental property. And as you've heard, there's been some moderation of the ordinance to help condos, it doesn't help apartment units. And we have pictures there that you've seen from the department, what a disaster this is going to be to put one of these meters per unit. Now, we have appealed the PUC ruling. We're proceeding with legislation, as Councilman Burnson said. We need some time, because if this goes into effect now, you're going to have people that are burdened. We have 94 units under, we're going to put under construction. We're going to have to think this over if we have to put in 94 units of gas valves, where one valve will do the job. Mr. Saffel is here, he's a contractor and does this type of work, and he can support what I've just said, I believe, but anyway, we need this put on hold now. We need the council to support our appeal, because it defies common sense, as Councilman Zine said, to let this go as is.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brian Hatkoff to be followed by Les Saffel and Fabian Padilla.
Good morning. My name is Brian Hatkoff. I'm a real estate broker dealing in commercial property throughout Los Angeles. I do not own property that this ordinance affects, but does affect my clients directly. One of the issues here are, there are a number of transactions currently in escrow that are in limbo right now, because they've negotiated a transaction during this time period where they allow the buyer to install the valves, because it went into escrow prior to that certain date. Those escrows have basically died and are dead because the buyer has not agreed to spend $5,000, $10,000, $20,000, whatever it costs to involve these gas valves. I support the Apartment Association's move to delay this issue to work with the PUC, because this is an issue of overkill, of having lots of valves when one will do the job. It becomes also a matter of major expense for property owners, and they're getting hit from all sides, from other expenses that aren't necessary, and I think it's an issue that should be reconsidered and delayed to something that could be brought up creatively and that we can work with the PUC to come up with a more rational solution to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Les Saffel, Fabian Padilla, and James Litz.
Good morning. My name is Les Saffel. I'm with SSP Gas Shut-Off Valve Company. I've been in this business since after the, right after the Northridge earthquake, so before it was really a business, I've been in the earthquake valve business, so I think I know what I'm talking about here. Okay. With regard to the current situation, I agree, this is not going to work. I could sell more valves. I don't want to sell more valves, because it's totally unreasonable burden on apartment owners especially. It is a Band-Aid solution for condominiums, putting one valve on the unit that sells within that condo. Now, here's my solution, and I appreciate attention. Here's my solution, very simple, and it can be done. This is not my idea, this is the idea of my CPUC attorney, who used to be a CPUC judge, okay, Ministry of Law judge. He suggests the, okay, the gas comes in up to the meter, now that's gas company property, and even a little bit beyond the meter is gas company property. That area is called bypass tee. That's where we had been feeding gas in, so we don't have to rely pilots, which is a tremendous effort to be able to get access for 100 units especially, it's impossible. In current situation, either with condos or apartments, we would have to access each unit to rely pilot lights. That is totally unworkable. The solution here is just have the PUC redesignate what is gas company property versus what is owner property, it's a very simple solution. When the meter, the immediate outlet side of the meter after, as it goes into the individual units, that is still gas company property, and that's the bypass tee area. But if that bypass tee area were redefined as being owner property, we could put one valve at that location, serve up tee number meters downstream, we could feed gas in, so no relying pilot lights. That is the solution. It's an arbitrary decision of the PUC as to what is considered gas company property on the gas line versus what is considered owner property, a simple little area there called the bypass tee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fabian Padilla, James Litz, and Richard Otterstrom.
James Litz, representing the Beverly Hills Greater Los Angeles Association of Realtors. I appreciate Mr. Stevens' help and Ms. Bird's help on the, working on the ordinance. I've heard three different dates here today on the effective date, effective date of March 1st, escrow's open as of March 1st, escrow's closed as of March 1st. For specific, we need a specific date with the Association of Realtors that affects the opening, the closing of an escrow, what that effective date is. So I'm just asking here, what is going to be the effective date? The condominium issue, the apartment issue is a greater issue, and I think the city council really needs to address that further, as well as promoting legislation to get the gas company back in the business. But if you could give me an exact, specific date about when properties have to comply, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Otterstrom.
Hello, Richard Otterstrom. I'm a member of the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles and also a member of the Beverly Hills Greater Los Angeles Board of Realtors, and I want to piggyback on what Trevor Grimm, your first speaker here, was addressing you on, and that was an appeal to the PUC. And I am living proof of why we need that. A few months ago, I had gas valves installed on all buildings that I own or manage. These are primarily non-rent-controlled buildings, non-rent-controlled buildings, and there was no close of escrow involved. I did it simply because I felt the building was better protected, and we can also get insurance benefits. I did it when the gas company was still in the business, so I could put one gas valve on each building. I had one building, 100-unit building, where the cost to put individual meters on would have been in excess of $40,000. That was more than half... That was more than half of a month's income, total income on that building. And instead, it cost less than $10,000 to do those. Another building, a 10-unit building, I put on one gas valve on a 10-unit building. It was an easy installation. It cost less than $300 to put one gas valve to cover that entire building. The overall effect was, these are non-rent controlled properties, so I could pass whatever I wanted along. But because it was so inexpensive per unit, I elected not even to pass anything on to the tenants by making up for it with benefits from the insurance company. But now that the gas company's out of the business, if I had to make that decision again, I would not decide to put those on voluntarily. Yes, perhaps I'd be forced to if I sold one of those buildings, but not voluntarily. I think it's to the benefit of all to go back to the way it was. And what I urge you to do is to support our appeal to the PUC and also pursue legislative legislation to clear this up. And in the meantime, if you could delay back to the 12-month for apartment buildings and condominiums, I feel that condominiums would also be encouraged to do this. Condominium associations would be encouraged to do their buildings also for the protection, for the insurance, and just for the fact that trying to do one at a time is insanity in a condominium building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for this item. Returning now to council debate and discussion. The chair recognizes the next, Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, we recognize all of the concerns that the apartment house owners have, but we also have to recognize the concerns of safety in our community. We are working with the PUC and with the legislation. We hope to get that clarified in this next session of the state legislature. And also, I think the gas company's going to have a tough time with standing, their stand against public safety. Let me just say that after the Northridge earthquake, where we had had a strong education program in this city to teach people how to turn their gas valves off in the event of a catastrophe, which we had and we had a severe one, for those of you that were in the valley and parts of the city. When the gas valves, when the gas was turned back on after the quake, they found 17,000 leaks, 17,000. If you talk to anybody in the fire department, they will tell you that this occurred during a weekday, work hours, instead of a holiday, early in the morning when people were at home. Probably, a good portion of the valley, if not all of it, could conceivably have burned. So this is for, not just for protection, I would think if I had a building, I would want to protect it, it's like an insurance policy. First of all, this doesn't go into effect unless the building's sold. Now, if the building is being sold, that's something that they can negotiate with the buyer or do it themselves, and the cost is going to be minimal compared to what they're going to sell the building for. I sympathize with you and I must tell you that I've been down through the rounds with Mr. Grimm and the apartment house owners in Los Angeles before. As the author of the URM, Unreinforced Brick and Masonry Building Ordinance, I had to fight with them to get the city to approve, thank God, an ordinance which saved 7,000 of these buildings, many of which are residential, about 100 or 150,000 residents in these buildings, survived the Northridge earthquake because we got that ordinance passed. In fact, one of their most ardent opposers of this came to me a couple days after the quake and thanked me and he says, you know, I opposed you, but thanks to you, he says, I have my buildings, they're still standing. So this is a matter of safety and I must tell you that I sympathize, I know nobody wants to spend money, but you don't have to spend the money today. We are going to get this thing directed, we cannot afford to wait and delay it for a year. We don't know if you can give the absolute ironclad guarantee from up above that we're not going to have a major catastrophe in the next year, it's a simple thing. But nobody can do that. We live in an earthquake zone and we have them regularly here and we have them of the type of size that creates significant damage. And we have to, we cannot delay this thing any further. So I would say this, I would hope that they will go along best they can, I know it may be a burden in some cases, but go along. We're going to get this thing adapted one way or the other so that we get the ability to install one valve. And you have my commitment on that part of it. And I would urge an I-vote today.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden.
I'll give you an ironclad guarantee that you're going to have major problems if we adopt it in a form that is in, and I'm supporting you, Mr. Burnson. I've come a long way, but I got to fix it. And to fix what I'm talking about, you make a good point regarding the apartment buildings. And you've got 100 units, you've got to have 100 shut-off valves. And the deals are cut and I'm sure you've made with real estate, Mr. Burnson. If you've got a moving piece of property, you've got to move it tomorrow or the next day. And if the devices are not sufficient numbers and the personnel is not available to install, you can't close escrow, which means you can't move the deal. That's going to be a real problem and we can't get property transfer tax into our general fund because we all bogged down with plans to install these devices. So we've got to have what is called an easy flow system to make it go and there's no stalling and the fact that the law still is in place and shall apply. Now, how do you fix that to make all that happen? For example, we, gas companies say they're not going to install anymore. That means that you're limited now to the personnel that's out there to install these devices. Are there insufficient numbers to address all the issues that are now currently in escrow? Or that will be in escrow come March 1st, which has come and gone already. I understand that that date has come and gone, so therefore, they would have to be compliant. Say they have a 15-day escrow, a 30-day escrow. No, everybody don't have a 90-day escrow, 30-day escrow to move the deal. Now, they can't move the deal because they backed, they can't install the device. What you need here, Mr. Burnson, is to put the money, leave the money in escrow, close the deal, leave the money in escrow, make it available to install the devices some subsequent date. So therefore, the money can be held from escrow and that can happen because the bottleneck is going to be, you can't get the device. Number two, you can't get the personnel. They will just, it's your motion and I think that we ought to consider the kind of problems that will be created as a result of expediting this, moving it forward like right now. And let's go to the apartment buildings. I would say to you that condominiums and apartment buildings, for the purpose of not being required to install one in each meter, that's stupid. We should delay that. Single-family homes, four-unit complexes, install post-haste. Multiple units, let's delay it for the purpose of giving us time to adopt legislation. You give us six months or a year because this legislation of the year will be over at the end of the year. Give none. And if you can get it installed, introduced, it becomes law by end of the year, it becomes effective first of the year, 2003. Then you're home free where you have one device when you transfer property. The biggest movement of properties and property transfer taxes are from the major multiple housing units when they're sold that comes to the city of Los Angeles. Now, you've got to be aware of that. Now, if you can't move property, you can't sell property in this city because the requirements is too stringent. Then, you know, you're going to have some major problems where they're going to be invading City Hall. Mr. President, you've been very kind and the time, about 20 seconds over. But I just want to say in closing, if you want to fix that, Mr. Burnson, you've heard the explanation. You've got my vote. Apply to four units or less a day, post right away. Give us some time to deal with apartments and condominiums. And use one device and I'll go along with it. And leave the one in escrow because we're not going to have enough devices and parts to even deal with the four units or less.
Thank you.
Gas companies not involved. If you want to fix that, then fine, I'm with you.
Chair recognizes, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was one gentleman who asked a specific date and if I got to have... That would be March 1st. And I might find the council... But this ordinance is in effect right now and what they're talking about for apartment houses really isn't affected by the language of this ordinance. It's December 29th. They were required to install one valve on each meter once the gas company got out of the business doing it. That's a requirement that's in force right now.
Okay, so there's, I thought that there was a loophole in some, we say it has to be done at the close of escrow. And then I also heard in your comments that because of the loophole, the timeframe, some would have a year to complete this. That's correct?
What became an issue was when the ordinance became effective December 29th, we had some escrows that were already in the process that had not negotiated this as an issue. So they wanted a start date on an escrow period on which to base for the purposes of doing it before the close of escrow, which was, we've established as March 1st. But the requirement that they install a valve has been in effect and that the requirement that they install it by the close of escrow was effective as of December 29th, 2001. So this, all this does is give them a date certain as he asked for, Mr. Litz asked for, of March 1st. Any escrows opened after that date would require the valve before the close of escrow. And again, this is, this is an intent issue and not part of the language. If you read it, and the intent tells the department that we will between the days of December 29th and March 1st, give them that latitude of having it done within a year of close of escrow. So everything after March 1st has to be done at that time escrow closes? That's correct. Okay.
Yes or no?
Again, the purpose for the ordinance is to protect the buildings, to have money in escrow, it's not protecting the buildings.
And I think that we've heard that the current procedure does not make sense for multiple units, that the earlier provision didn't make sense where you had one device protecting the entire premises, whether it be a condo or an apartment building. And I support the safety, I support the fact that reality says we may have earthquakes living in this region. Since the gas company doesn't do it, and that was taken, that action was placed after we instituted our action, that they decided to get out of the business. I've got some serious concerns and reservations for the safety of the people in those buildings and also for the reality of having the individual that has the devices to install them on the units. So I mean, I support the safety, but I have some real reservations and concerns. It seems that this is a patchwork that we're trying to put together and it really doesn't address the issue that we want to address, is establish safety in those buildings at the time of an earthquake.
Without the ordinance, Councilman, that if you sold a individual condominium unit the way the ordinance is written, if we don't adopt this one today, then the department would require them to put valves on every unit within that condominium. So part of this, part of this is really...
Well, that would be good, that would be good to enhance safety.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Burnson.
I think most of the questions have been answered. Basically speaking, the dates, anything, any escrow which was opened prior to March 1st would not be required to comply. They would have a year to comply under the old ordinance, right?
By the intent, yes.
Yeah. Second of all, on this particular, on this particular thing, I don't know whether they could negotiate with escrow. The main purpose, if there were some sort of an agreement between them and the money was assured to close the valve or install, I'm sure something could be worked out that way. And if it can't, I'll bring in a separate ordinance to allow that, a separate amendment. But we need to move forward with this today. We already have an ordinance in place. What this does today is clarify and make it easier for them. We passed this ordinance in December and it required, it was much more stringent. And I recognize, they came to me and they said, you know, we need some time to work some of these things out, some of the problems. And we sat down with them in good faith and worked them out. And the only thing we don't have any absolute control over is what the PUC may do. And we will work on that and we'll get that taken care of. So it isn't pressing because not every building owner is selling their property tomorrow. And hopefully, we'll be able to get this thing done as quickly as possible. So I think we need to move forward today. It's for the safety of all of us and I would urge an I-vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Holden.
Did I just say if one person sold their condominium where they had been required to retrofit the device, do the other units have to comply as well? Yes or no?
Under the terms of this ordinance, only the unit affected by the sale or the remodel.
And so therefore, just the unit that's affected by the sale or the remodel. Which therefore, say it's 40-unit condos and then one is retrofitted with the device and the other 39 are not. So when an earthquake comes, all you need is one that's not retrofitted and you have malfunction and the house still burns, right?
It would protect the gas piping in the unit.
Just for one unit? Yeah. So, but if the other units that are not protected, they burn anyway, right? Could, it's a likelihood.
It's possible, yes.
Of course, you don't even say that line. Why are you holding back? The answer is yes, I'll say it for you. So you need the single shut-off valve, obviously. And the PUC didn't do us right here knowing that we were going to introduce this ordinance not long. Get the chase, the law is... But let me just say this, it's still not as clean as it could be and for that reason, I'm going to have to withhold on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Any other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I believe we're ready for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Everybody have a chance to vote? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, three noes.
That is approved. The ordinance holds over for a week. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 11 is on the desk also.
We were awaiting staff to be able to answer questions. I see somebody stepping up to the task. Item 11, called special by Ms. Hahn.
Phil Tongro, Deputy Director, Asset Management, General Services Department.
Joy Ubre, Asset Management, General Services.
Item 11, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason I wanted you to come and answer a few questions was because two of the facilities that we're talking about, one is called the Watts City Hall and the other is San Pedro City Municipal Building to do an RFP for concessions. I have a couple of questions. One is, how is RFP conducted? Are local coffee houses or coffee vendors targeted? How do you do that? One of the things I'm concerned about is there's a couple of local coffee shops in San Pedro which probably would not be all that happy if we had a van ayes vendor coming into the San Pedro City Hall selling coffee. And the other one is the Watts City Hall. I'm confused on that terminology. Is it the old Watts City Hall or is it the new Civic Center where now the council office has its field office and there's the library and some other things? So there's two separate entities, there's the Watts City Hall and then there's the Watts Civic Center. So I was wanting to get a clarification on which building you were talking about. So if you could address both those issues for me.
Certainly. Why don't we start with the second one first, let Ms. Ubre explain the location for the Watts area.
Well, as far as location goes, sure, as far as location goes, we were making reference to the Watts Civic Center. Actually, because of the number of facilities that are present on that particular corner, it would be left up to, we were using that term for general description, but when it comes down to the RFP itself, it would have been a little bit more specific.
So Watts City Hall still exists, but it's a different location?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, and then on your first question on the RFP, we do a tremendous outreach program every time we do an RFP, but I publish it in the local newspapers since this is, if you notice, the report lists various areas, we'll make an effort to put it into the local newspapers, like the South Bay News, the Random Lengths and whatnot, as well as going through. And we can contact those various coffee vendors in San Pedro, the Sacred Grounds and Sixth Mesa, and get that all squared away. And the other coffee vendors in the area, we can work with their office to do that so that they want to, see if they're interested in doing some type of a coffee cart. And we're envisioning putting the carts, since the municipal building itself doesn't have any locations inside it per se, it would be on the courtyard on the south side of the building, which is electrical already and needs some water. We have to identify an area which would accommodate that, that will need a flexible and water for the coffee cart.
Okay, and then in Watts, would you be doing the same thing in terms of targeting?
Yes, we will. This is kind of a unique type of thing where we're looking for coffee carts to serve to municipal facilities in the local area, so we'll... we'll endeavor to reach out to that local area to see if anyone's interested in doing that.
When, when will you be doing the RFP?
Um, as soon as it's proved today, and then we can move forward with it.
Um, I would like for you to work with my office on, uh, making sure that we've, uh, got a large enough net that we're throwing out there, uh, to target, particularly the Watts community, target civic organizations that might be interested in responding.
That's fine, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Ms. Galanter. Hold on a second. Let's get your mic done. Go ahead.
No?
There it is.
Now? Okay. Thank you. I have been waiting years. Now, I've been waiting a little longer to ask this question. Um, I, I hope that when you do your outreach to local businesses, that you will be targeting specifically businesses within the city of Los Angeles. Um, and because I noticed, for example, when, when, uh, before we moved out of the building and moved back, I haven't had much occasion to, to patronize our little local, what used to be our sidewalk cafe inside here. But you'd go and pick up the, uh, snacks that were there, and they were all coming from somewhere outside the city of Los Angeles. And it seems to me, especially in city facilities, that we want to support businesses who, much as they hate doing it, in fact pay LA City business tax, and based on their gross receipts, and help us keep the city afloat. And so I, that's the same reason I always get nervous when our city employees hold retirement parties and things outside the city of Los Angeles. These are the people, all our salaries depend on the city having revenue, and that depends in part on encouraging our own businesses. Now, some parts of some municipal facilities throughout our city are just as close to other jurisdictions as they are to other neighborhoods within the city of Los Angeles. So will there be a focus on businesses that are actually located in the city, our city?
Well, for the, uh, actual vendors, we'll endeavor to do that, particularly in the various council districts, which we're going to proceed with the coffee carts, ensure that-
Of course, we can, I know, we can't control where they buy the stuff. I understand that, but-
But we'll endeavor to get the local people to mandate these various carts and, uh, in order to do it. But one thing we have found, though, is that to do a cart, um, it takes a capital investment of close to $45,000 just to get one up and running.
Well, well, I understand that you're not going to get them from just any neighborhood group because of exactly that reason. But surely, I, personally, my preference is to go a little farther afield and have a vendor who's part of the city of Los Angeles than to get one close. I'll just give you an example. I mean, my council district abuts more other jurisdictions than it does other LA City council districts. And that's because we have funny-looking city boundaries. Uh, but I'd still rather be supporting the businesses that are LA City businesses.
Certainly. And, and as I said, with the outreach program that we envision, we'll be going to, uh, not only the local newspapers, but also the local merchants who specialize in this, attempting to bring them into the-
All right. Please do. Because if you go to some local newspapers, just as an example, if you go to the local newspaper in the Marina area, it's a paper we all love. It's about the only real local paper we've got. But it covers the county in the Marina. It covers the city of Santa Monica. It covers the city of Culver City, and it covers the city of Los Angeles. And understandably enough, the chambers of commerce are all interconnected, some of them are interconnected, not all of them, uh, which is all very fine. But if we're trying to support businesses from the city of Los Angeles, you're going to have to really pay attention to that. So I just want to encourage you to do that.
Yes, ma'am. We will. Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, uh, I just wanted to ask a question. I know that the county in the courthouse has a practice of, when we, when they, um, give out these contracts, that they, um, I don't know how they do it, but they give a preference to, uh, individuals who are blind or who have difficulty seeing. And so is there a way that, uh, if we go out to bid on this, that we can do a preference to, my, my personal choice is the deaf and hard of hearing community. But is there a way that we can legally do that so that maybe we can help out some of, uh, our groups locally?
Uh, we, we could definitely look into that contract and, and see, you know, what type of parameters we could use to, you know, do something like that.
Yeah. You just find out if, uh, maybe it's, um, I don't know how they do it, but I can tell you that, that was one of the things I noticed when I was working at the courthouse over there, is that all the snack bar, snack shops, concessionaires, uh, appeared to have, uh, limited, uh, vision, if not complete blindness.
We'll definitely look into that, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Uh, next item, Mr. President. Item not on the agenda is a motion presented by Council Member Labange and seconded by Council Member Perry, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are two concrete, uh, public stairways located in the Mount Olympus area. The Bureau of Street Services has just, um, discovered that there are federal funds that may be available under the Hazard Elimination Safety Plan. The deadline is March 5th, and therefore, the council, uh, needs to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda. And there's an immediate need to act. There would be a 10% city match, which would be identified in the future if the city grant is approved.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
The special one is now before us. Members wishing to be heard? Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, uh, members of council, some of the districts have public stairs. Public stairs have, uh, needs, and this, this particular stairway is in severe, uh-
Deteriorated.
-deterioration. Thank you very much. Mr. Chan is here from Street Services. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Hopefully, we'll be able to capture this grant and be able to repair this so people can walk their neighborhood and meet their neighborhoods, uh, and the neighbors of their neighborhood by the public stair system in the Mount Olympus area of Hollywood Hills. I ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth list, please. Next item.
Next, next item, Mr. President. Uh, there is a special two, and that is a motion presented by Council Member Hahn, seconded by Council Member Garcetti, and I believe Council Member Hahn will make the findings.
Madam City Attorney, first.
Uh, I believe that, um, this is, this is for a resolution for the, um, to be brought back to the National League of Cities, and, uh, Ms. Hahn is going to make the findings on that.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Uh, this is a resolution that, uh, includes in our legislative agenda for all of you, specifically who are going back on Thursday to Washington DC, to push for, lobby for, uh, continue to support the bills that are asking the federal government to declare a state of emergency on September 11th, so that we in the city can recoup, uh, the costs that we incurred, uh, helping to fight the war on terrorism, uh, that day and beyond. Uh, just opening our emergency operations center cost $255,000. Uh, but of course, we have many more costs associated with, uh, what happened on September 11th. So the reason I'm calling it, uh, Rule 23, uh, is because, um, I didn't realize until, uh, I read in the paper this morning, uh, the amount of money that we encouraged in opening the center and the fact that we cannot get reimbursed until the federal government declares it a state of emergency. And since many of you are going back on Thursday, I wanted this to be an official resolution from our city, so that you have the strength of all of us behind you, um, pushing for the federal government to help us out with these costs. So that's the reason I, uh, thought it was Rule 23.
Ms. Sikowski.
Uh, Mr. President, I had, uh, chatted with Ms. Hahn. I had no problem with the resolution, but I, I was, I wasn't aware that it was coming in as a Rule 23 and suspending the rules. I believe we've already created this as an action in terms of the thing that we did with Mr. Weiss, which was to support by resolution, uh, the lobbyists in Washington and in Sacramento to pursue the, I think we were told in committee yesterday, there were 40 or 50 bills that would take care of both, uh, supplementing, uh, reimbursement, creating new funds that would be available for all kinds of new emergency operations and preparation. So I'm not so sure that this is necessarily a Rule 23, uh, just because we're going back to Washington. We've known about what happened on September 11th for quite some time. And I think that this is able to be covered elsewhere and not technically- I see the city attorney shaking her head affirmatively, uh, that legally this may not meet that test in terms of suspending our rules for a, something that we weren't aware of before this time.
The problem that I have with this is that we have had on our, um, on our recess agenda for about two months. The other issues, the council would need to make their determination.
Mr. Holden.
What does all this talk about? We're in war. What's wrong with you? There's some people just, we lost seven more people, nine more people just yesterday. State of war. And so this has been around for a while? So what? Fact of the matter is that, that we're going to be there, the League of Cities. Let the League of Cities take a position, saying to the president, do what you have to. You said it's a state of war, then you declare a state of emergency so we can get funds that we've appropriated for safety and security. We've been working with the FBI, the CIA, and all of them, federal agencies, to make it, make sure that the people in this area are safe. At the airport, the additional costs we've incurred, what are we talking? Do we have to question that? This motion? I don't understand it. Do we have to question this motion? I understand what Ms. Scott is saying, but that's, that's routine. The fact of the matter is that we should have done this before, yes. But the League of Cities were not meeting before. They're meeting now as the oversight and the part of CLA for not bringing it to our attention. Mr. D. But now it's being brought to our attention by, 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 Ms. Hahn. So I'm going to encourage each and every one of you to vote on it.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I just want to remind us that we did this. We passed the resolution. We went after the home securities bill being sponsored by, uh, it was the Hillary Clinton. So bottom line is, we've sent direction to our lobbyists in Sacramento and Washington DC, and we are taking steps to go after all the various items that are out there to do just this. So, uh, I truly applaud Councilmember Hahn for this proactivity and putting this in our radar. But I also think we as a city need to be able to present ourselves in a manner in which we are approaching this process in the manner that, that it calls for. We were following protocol. We've got, we're pursuing the bills. We're dealing with our lobbyists in Sacramento, Washington DC. The resources are there. Now we're going after it. So we are doing this. I think in, to be effective, perhaps we should get a briefing from CLA to tell us which bills are going where. We should make appointments with our elected representatives in Congress and at the federal level, and make our appointments, assert ourselves, and let them know that the council voted for this. It's in our radar and it's a high priority. Because we are not only dealing with international terrorism, we're dealing with domestic terrorism. And those are the kinds of resources we need to make our neighborhoods safer. And that's what we need to be going after. Uh, so I just want to remind the council, the body, and I do applaud you, Councilmember Hahn. I think it's a, you know, something we need to do, but we do have a process. We're following it. And, um, I just want to make sure that we know what we're doing there.
Ms. Galanter.
You know, today's election day, and we're all kind of curious about who's going to vote, whether anybody's going to bother. Um, but I think it's especially important on election day, even though I support the intent of what you're trying to do, um, I think it's important to remember that we are a nation of laws, and one of the laws, the state of California, is the Brown Act. It's a pain in the neck, frankly, but it exists. And we are all sworn to uphold it. And really, the need to do this did not arise subsequent to posting today's agenda. And there's nothing to prevent all of you who are going to Washington from talking to, uh, anybody you want to talk to in Washington at the League of Cities or on the Hill, um, about the need to, to help us pay for the increased costs. But I just don't think that this is a Rule 23 motion under the criteria in the, in the Brown Act. And so I'm happy to support the intent of the motion, but I think that I really can't support the findings that the need arose subsequent to the posting of today's agenda.
Mr. Zane. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, colleagues. The only thing that I feel is different and exceptional about what I'm asking today, um, is this is different than us going after Homeland Security money and, and going after a continued source of money that we believe should be ours as a result of the fact that we are partnering with the federal government in fighting the war on terrorism at our airport, at our port, here at our Civic Center. I don't want them to ever forget that we're their, our, their partners. Only yesterday, the LAX was shut down for two hours, uh, because of a, a grenade that was packed in somebody's baggage. I mean, we are on the front lines of this war every single day. And there is money that I expect should be coming out of the Homeland Security, uh, federal budget on fighting this war. The reason this is different is this is about being reimbursed. This is about recouping the money that we specifically spent that we can't, that is not a part of some of these other bills. This is because the federal government has not declared a state of emergency as of September 11th, which many times the federal government does way past the actual emergency so that local government can recoup their money. That's the only reason. This does not mean that I'm circumventing what we're already doing, going after some of the other money, lobbying. Like you said, there's 40 or 50 bills out there. But this one is specific, um, to really pressuring the federal government to declare a state of emergency so that we can begin to recoup the money that we can legally recoup. Not, again, not to talk about extra funding that should be coming our way long-term to continue. This war is not over. This war is not over. And we will be in Los Angeles, probably more than any other city, on the front line of fighting this war on terrorism on a daily basis. This was special. Um, I did not realize it until, uh, this morning, uh, that we were not going to be in line to recoup this money until the federal government declared a state of emergency. And I felt, since there was a delegation going back there this Thursday, I'm not going to be one of those. But I wanted you to have, um, that specific request. Just that, asking the federal government to declare a state of emergency. So that's why I feel it's different, um, than, than us already pursuing some bills that will, uh, put us in line for long-term funding to fight this war on terrorism. So I hope you'll support this.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want my colleague Ms. Hahn to know that I very much appreciated what she just said. And I want to, I want to second your comments there. Um, you are absolutely right. And it, it's, it's a real pleasure for me to hear you say that. I want to hear everyone in this room say that. I want to see a day in this council when everybody in this council says what Janice Hahn just said, which is that we are fighting a war on terrorism, and it's about time that we in Los Angeles took our responsibilities to fight that war seriously. And it's about time, Ms. Hahn, that we in Los Angeles put our money where our mouth is to fight that war against terrorism and to be prepared for terrorism. Because we have not done that. We haven't done that. And if we continue to not participate, we will be advocating, advocating our responsibility to provide for public safety in this city. And that concerns me terribly. Um, so I really appreciate the fact that you have taken this on and have put this before us. Now, I do hear what my colleague Ms. Sikowski and my colleague Ms. Galanter have said about the findings. And those arguments resonate with me because I believe in the process, and I believe in the rules that govern this council. And, and, and we need to really pay attention and pay much more close attention in the future to the rules. Um, and I have seen, frankly, some Rule 23s come by that aren't even close to yours. I mean, yours is, yours is right there in the gray area. There have been some that have come before us in the last several months that I think are, are a couple steps beyond. Um, I really admire your good faith in bringing this forward today. People are going to be in Washington this weekend. I'm going to be in Washington next week, meeting with federal officials, also working on the federal funding angle. And I'm going to support you for that reason. I just want to say to my colleagues, this is important. It's important to seek the reimbursement for the couple hundred grand. It's important to seek federal, possible federal sources of funding for other anti-terrorism activities. If you think that is enough to make this city safe, you're dead wrong. You're dead wrong. We can't count- We can't count on the feds to save Los Angeles. We have to make that a priority and protect ourselves. And I'm going to support you, Ms. Hahn.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I always like to support Janice Hahn, but I think what Mr. Ray has said was very important. And also, I think, and you've said some important things too, Mr. Weiss, and Ms. Galanter. Everybody said important things. We're not on the front lines. Those both soldiers, those men and women of the United States Armed Forces are on the front lines. We're here in Los Angeles, and we're managers of this city. We're council members. But we have to be as good businesspeople and make sure that we work with good relations with the state, the county, not in that order, with the county, state, and federal government to make sure that our managers bring to our attention when there's opportunities to be reimbursed. Or we look at all the reimbursement of Los Angeles police officers who left the narcotics details and went out to do surveillance because of this incident of September 11th. I don't know. But certainly, we should look at those things, too. I just want to say that I would love to support you, Janice, but I think we should take this offline and look at it when we do the budget, because it's going to be a very severe budget year, to make sure at every opportunity that we run a good business of government, that we get the proper reimbursement, whatever the level is, anywhere that it is. And also, I would like to just say, too, the front lines are out there in Afghanistan. We have problems in our streets, in our neighborhoods, that we have to pay attention to. But God bless every man and woman who serves the armed forces. They're at the front lines. We're in the city of Los Angeles. And I just wanted to kind of correct that because I'm touched by what Mr. Holden said, too, as well. But this is a city government. This is a business situation. That we're going to get reimbursement. We're going to inform through the processes. And if not, have Mr. Canfield come here and explain to it why we're not doing it or bring it to our attention. Prove that. Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Holden.
I'm learning every day. Just don't believe my ears. Mr. Labange, ask and you shall receive. Don't ask, you don't get. Number one. Ms. Galanter, if you're going to talk about the Brown Act, we should not bring in any more special ones. Fact of the matter, this is a special. Bring in no more specials. Let me just say that if we have all these states, these alerts, we have all these alerts, and we have to pay for that out of general fund, and all we have to do is ask the president to declare this is a state of alert, emergency? What's wrong with requesting that? He can say no, but if you don't ask, he won't say yes. And having the League of Cities do it on your behalf? What's wrong with doing that? Talking about playing by the rules? You are playing by the rules. Would it benefit the people or the taxpayers of this city? Why not ask for the money? We have a disaster. We ask for it, they give it to us. When they declare a disaster? They already declared war, and they're saying, yeah, you're going to spend all this money. We're not going to reimburse you. So I would say to you that, once again, in closing, if you don't ask, you don't get. But using all these excuses about the Brown Act and that, and you're bringing specials all the time? I don't understand. Ask, if you asked before, ask again. If you don't understand the motion that we adopted before, adopt it again. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine passes. Any other members wishing to be heard? That ends discussion. I believe we have the findings, not the motion, but the findings before us at this time. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, five noes.
The findings are not made. I believe the motion then carries over Rule 16. Okay. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on the agenda under council's jurisdiction.
And seeing no requests, hold a comment for today's meeting. It is closed. Next item?
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Questions are posted and referred.
There are two excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Friday, April 26, personal business meets council policy.
Ms. Zine is excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, May 17, to leave at 11:30. City business that also meets council policy.
She's excused.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. In accordance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item before us.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Are there any announcements? Members, any announcements?
It's out and vote in this great city and their neighborhoods. No? We're going to make sure it's announcements, Mr. Holden, before we get to that. But just to remind the people to go out and vote and participate in the great American process of democracy.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Now, are there any adjourning motions? Please stand.
Proposition 45, don't forget that one.
Adjourning motions? Ms. Hahn.
Yes. Councilwoman Burnson asked me to ask if we would adjourn in the memory of Billy Savala, who passed away on Friday, March 1st. And he is survived by two children and several grandchildren.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, we ask that we adjourn in memory of Ms. Alice Kingsworth, passed away March 1st. She was 88 years old at the time of her passing. Ms. Kingsworth was a founding member of the Mansfield Avenue and the 21st Street Block Club. Was very active in the community. Her graveside service will be this Thursday, March 7, at Inglewood Park Cemetery. Survived by four grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. As President, members, also, there's another tragic event that took place in the district where 11-year-old genius I've learned was killed. His name is Cameron Williams, Jr. Passed away February 22nd. He was 11 years old, a victim of a street violence drive-by. On the day he was killed, his father was shot at the 10th District Park. The Williams family visited, the father in the hospital. As the family members returned home, someone fired on their car, killing Cameron and injuring a passenger in another car. At least two other people were injured. The services were held on Saturday, the 2nd, at the St. Andrews Baptist Church. He survived by his parents and other family members. I might add, Mr. President, members, that this little boy touched so many lives. He had about four, between 400 and 500 people at the church. And 3/4 of them, young and old, were crying, talking about what he meant to them. This 11-year-old boy. The principal of the school came out, and his teacher, and there was a gentleman that God sent. His name is Mr. Garcia, an immigrant. His little boy played with Cameron. They were closest of friends. And when you're 11 years old, living in a city sometime, you don't have insurance. And Mr. Garcia provided a burial plot for Cameron at Inglewood Cemetery and had his family there. Everybody was weeping. And they gave him a standing ovation. This man is like an angel to that family and to our community. And we just need more Mr. Garcias around